Time to go, girl.
Uh-oh. Time to go.
I know it, I know.
Yeah.
Huh? Well, only half the lot's wrong.
I'm fine.
Yeah, they're brat. Ooh. Yes, brat.
I don't know, it's just... Must be, uh...
This, this is me.
I'd like to call this December twentieth, two thousand and seven, meeting of the Cookel City Council to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Saleh.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. If we could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and innocence for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No changes.
No changes. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Alright. Item two in our old business is to consider approval of minutes of council meeting held December the sixth, two thousand and seven. Do we have a motion and a second?
With approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item three, consider on second and final reading ordinance zero seven one one three three, rezoning properties along Woodson Avenue between East Hudson Street and East Stephen Street from RS five, single-family residential to RS ten, single-family residential. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance will rezone twenty-five parcels comprising twelve point nine acres located along Woodson Avenue. As noted at first reading, this rezoning was initiated at the request of the property owners with the owners of seventeen of the twenty-five parcels indicating they favored rezoning. The proposed rezoning's been approved by the planning commissions recommended by the planning department, and we've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item four, consider on second and final reading ordinance zero seven one one three four, comprehensive rezoning along North Washington Avenue and Tenth Street from CL local commercial to CN neighborhood commercial. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, this ordinance rezones thirty-eight parcels in their entirety and portions of four others located along North Washington Avenue and East Tenth Street. The proposed rezoning was initiated by the planning commission following the completion of a study on the current zoning of certain properties along Tenth Street and North Washington. The purpose of the study was to evaluate the appropriateness of the current CL local commercial zoning of the area and to examine the feasibility of CN zoning. The proposed rezoning's been approved by the planning commission as recommended by the planning department.
Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion by the council?
Mayor, I would like to, at this time, as you know, at first reading, I did discuss my concern about changing the CL zone to a CN zone of the North Side Shopping Center, and I still have concerns about that. So I would like to, at this time, to offer an amendment to strike or remove from this motion, to remove the area that is west of North Washington that borders the university zoning. If everyone will look at the map and follow what I'm saying so that we make sure that everyone understands, that borders university zoning to the west, that borders Twelfth Street and the railroad track to the north, that borders Tenth Street on the south, and borders North Washington to the east. I would like to present that as a, an amendment to this motion.
Okay, we have an amendment. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. And now let's open up the floor for discussion on the amendment.
Clarification from me, Vice Mayor Davis. The easternmost boundary, are you saying your amendment would include the properties east of North Washington in, or that they would, they would remain in CN zone, CL zoning?
They, no. The, the property east of North Washington would remain in a CN zone because it, it touches, it backs to property that faces Wamak. So anything that is east of the Washington Avenue, I feel should remain in the CN zone. But the other part that I've just read does not touch any residential areas. And so I feel like that it should just remain in, as a CL zone. So, but I, and I'm very much in favor, by the way, as I've stated last time. I'm very much in favor of the CN zone that goes up Tenth Street and the east part of North Washington.
I would have to say that the, at the last meeting, I did not support this. And I, one of the reasons was that I had felt very supportive of what the planning commission was trying to do. I think that it was a very long-range vision to begin coming up with a way to protect that part of town and the residential areas of that part of town as, as it began to develop and grow. And when, when we, when I first started talking about this, it was primarily focused on Tenth Street. And I had really sort of favored doing a, kind of an all or nothing down Tenth Street. But since that time, it, you know, it's come to my attention that maybe there needs to be some pockets of, of local commercial through there to allow things at this time that can't go into the CN zoning. And I think that we certainly all want to come back and revisit the CN. Hopefully, the planning commission can, can continue to study that and maybe add some uses into that zone that will make it more palatable to the, to the property owners in that area. But this particular area that the vice mayor has made a motion to exclude from the CN, as she stated, does not really adjoin any residential. And I think when I first started thinking about this, that that's, that's sort of the intent, was to help protect a tremendous amount of residential, both north and south on Tenth Street. So although I really don't think that the CN would be necessarily damaging to that area, I mean, I think that it's, it's a, you know, having gone out there and looked at it and looked at this whole area several times, it's, it's a fine-looking shopping center. It looks to be, I would guess, at a hundred percent capacity right now. It looks like a, you know, a fine place. I had, had lunch there today. So, you know, I, I don't know that changing it is going to make or break the, the whole deal. So what concerns me more, I guess, is, is some of the places that are going to be redeveloped and places that are vacant that makes more sense to plan ahead for the future of what could happen to those areas.
In the...
Go ahead.
Okay. In the amendment, you're suggesting that you go to the railroad tracks.
Tenth Street and railroad... Beg your pardon? The twelfth, twelfth, twelfth street and railroad track.
Okay. Alright. Well, I still just envision, maybe not now, maybe not ten years from now, but as time progresses, I think a CN area there would be nice up against the university to tie into the neighborhood, to the people who are south of that. And there are residents on Eleventh Street. Am I correct?
There's some rental properties, I think, mostly in that area.
But rental property or not, that's still somebody's residence. And I just, I'm still supportive of, of that going CN because I feel like the grandfather clause will protect the owners of those properties so that they can maintain their level of business for as long as they need to.
I think it would be my intention that the success of the CN zoning along Tenth Street will make some of the other folks come back and want to be in it in the future. And if we amend the uses that are in it, I think it'll make it easier for, for folks to, to realize that it's not going to hurt them. I, I think that with the, the grandfathering, I, you know, and again, maybe our council can shed some light on this, but to me, when, the North Side Shopping Center as a business, you know, he's not the individual businesses in each one of the, he's not the tenants. And so to me, his business, it's, it's kind of hard to grandfather him in because those businesses are going to change. I mean, I really, I'm, I'm like you, I don't think it's going to be a make or break kind of a deal for that area. But I can understand those concerns because he has an existing business there.
That was the question I asked last time, is how do you define the business, whether it's the, the rental as the business or the businesses within the rental business? My question to, to, to Mr. Mills would be, when do you anticipate we could look at what is allowed or what, how we could change that CN zoning at some point to make it better?
We can look at it at the next meeting if you, we can start looking at it whenever we're directed to do so.
I, I would, I would like to, if you want a directive, I would like for us, that to be a directive that within the next, you know, month or two, that, that we get that on the agenda to look at and, and determine how we can make that more efficient or, or a little bit broader-based zone to allow some things that, you know, possibly would, would be fine. You know, the, as I said before, the spirit of when we redid the initial property at Tenth and Washington was to look at the whole process. You have to, I think you have to look at, you, you kind of look at the whole thing in total, but then you also look at things individually. Obviously, you have an existing business, and I think you said that the part that was left out of the other part was like fifty-five percent non-conforming, something like that?
Fifty-five percent of the whole area?
Fifty-five percent of the properties, fifty-five percent of the properties in the area between the two places that we rezoned was not, were, were non-conforming.
There that was left, as recommended?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
If you look at landmass, you know, this, this parcel here become, it, it's like seventy or, over seventy percent non-conforming if you look at landmass area within that, within that. So, you know, to me, that's another, that's a reason, look at that. I said that that night, this, this amendment wasn't presented. You know, you have the opposite corner, the undeveloped corner. While, you know, as an undeveloped property owner, you look at that, really, that is something that we do want to protect. We want to still be able for them to develop it. And I, I guess I'd like Mr. Raiders to speak to that as far as the development. Since it's, since there's nothing there now, you're not really excluding anything per se. Is that correct?
Well, there's nothing there to be grandfathered in.
Right.
And so it would be, if, if the, if the original zoning proposal passed or the amendment passed, then it would be governed by the same CN zoning that was passed there where the, the bank is right now on the opposite corner, and it backs up to Timber Lane. So everything up that way would be in the same CN zone as, as what was passed where the prospective Walgreens would be.
Okay.
I think, James, is it not correct that the reason this piece of property is currently considered non-conforming is only due to size, not to use? Is that correct?
All the uses in the shopping center conform or are permitted, that are currently in the shopping center are permitted in the CN district. The only thing that, and I don't know that, how long it's not been used as such, that, the, the restaurant, though I think it was a Mexican restaurant at the last use, the drive-throughs aren't permitted currently in a CN, and that's the only use. If it's been used as a drive-through in thirty months, that would be grandfathered in.
I think as the council's representative of the planning commission, this is really hard. I was talking to some, we had an open house tonight, I was talking to some about the improvements we've made to City Hall. And one of the things, as a new city councilman and a representative of the planning commission, you, I, when I first came in here, this place was completely different, and it changed dramatically in a year. And I think as I look and see what's going on, on that side of town, the reason why the planning commission looked at this entire area is we weren't looking at it, what it was going to be like next year, or the second year, or the third year. We're looking at what the property, what we would like the property to look like twenty years from now. And so, as a planning commission representative to the council, we looked at what we thought would be the best use for it at the time. As it relates to whether it's non-conforming and whether it applies, thirteen seven two oh eight applies, I think what the owner is, is currently using it would only be non-conforming because of size, and he would continue to be, to operate in the same manner in perpetuity, is my understanding. Is that right, James?
That's correct.
And so it's very difficult because as a planning commission, we looked at this area and we thought to ourselves, what do we want it to look like in the future? And we thought that it would be better if there was some uniformity on all quadrants of the intersection itself, especially with the commitment that we made and the spirit of the commitment we made to the southwest quadrant. And so, albeit that it is a non-conforming use on that side, my fear and the planning commission's fear at the time was any dilute, any diluting of this rezoning for this future purpose would only facilitate further dilution, if you will. And so for that reason alone, and voting on this at the planning commission level and here, I'm in favor of, of it maintaining what we currently voted for in first reading. And so it's very difficult, but I, I think there are some people in the audience that would like to comment on it since we've all commented on it. Might be a good idea to do that.
I'd like to say just one thing before the audience begins to speak. Remember, the chairman of the planning commission spoke to us last time and was commenting as to one of the major thrusts that they used in this discussion and was that protection of residential areas. And so if the planning commission had that thought in mind, then I'm, I'm thinking that we're not going totally against what you and the planning commission is saying, but it's, it's, but it's to do with residential protection. So that's what part of, part of, I'm basing my thoughts on is that that three or four acres, whatever that section is, does not provide that much protection for residential areas if that's what we want to use protection, because it does not touch anything. And it's been there forty years, and it, and there's been homes that's been built around it for forty years. So I, I just don't see the point in doing this. And I do not want to set a precedent for future CN zoning, rezoning that we, you know, we don't want to get in this problem again. So we don't want to start saying, well, okay, here's another CL zone, we'll change, we'll change that to a CN because we can't have everybody having a CN zone when it's close to a neighborhood. If it's been, if it's established, it, you know, this is an established neighborhood, I mean, established shopping center close to a neighborhood. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Yes, sir, please. Come up, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I hope, I apologize for all if I repeat some of the things that have already been said here. But I don't like working on this, so I'm going to go with it anyway. I, like, like Councilmember Davis said, it was brought up in the last, at the first reading that the main concern in this zoning recommendation was protection of single-family homes. And if the published goal of this Cookel Planning Department, correct if I'm wrong here, is the primary, and it's, this is quote, "The primary goal of the Department of Plan, Department of Planning is to protect and enhance the quality of life of citizens of Cookel while creating an environment which stimulates growth and economic development." I think that, seriously, I think the protection of the quality of life of citizens is a major concern. But this, the creation of economic development and growth for the cities is a major concern as well. And downzoning a large portion of a major road into the city is not necessarily mounting that creating economic development and growth in the city. But it may, in opinion of the planning commission and others, be the best compromise in achieving both aspects of the goal of the planning mission. But downzoning an area that has already been developed with overwhelming percentage of commercial use is not a good compromise. It does nothing to make what is already there more compatible with the adjoining residential properties. And regardless of the state grandfather statutes, downzoning places constraints on already established businesses. Perhaps this is one of the reasons the planning department left out twenty-nine parcels in the Hudson Strip along Ten. I, there don't know of it. According to the city plan, the majority of the parcels in that area were non, was non-conforming. Whereas a minority of the parcels in the area of, of Washington north of Ten, a minority there was non-conforming. If you count the number of parcels, and this was brought up in the science, if you count the number of parcels in the area that was non-conforming east of Brown, all the way up to Fisk, I think there were fifty-eight parcels in there, and that was about fifty-eight percent. Oh, twenty-nine parcels there, it's about fifty-eight percent non-conforming. And the minority of parcels north of Ten of Washington was non-conforming. The land size, if you, if you look at the size of parcels, and there's one large parcel, several medium sized, and if you compute the amount of land that's there and count the parcels that are non-conforming, about seventy percent of that land is non-conforming. The other thirty percent is residential property, because it's, it's rent residences that are in the neighborhood there that are being lived in at this time. It's what, there's, there's a considerable amount of vacant land there, and it's, if any mayor in here owns some of that property, that I have talked to, that I have spoken to most people living there, they are either out of town or using it as in companies and property and would prefer that it be left in local commercial. When looking at this area north of Ten and west of Washington, currently be considered, currently being considered for downzoning, the quality of life for citizens is not an issue. It doesn't adjoin any property which is used for residential except that area on the north which I just talked, spoke about. And the area on, to the west of it, is school and school playgrounds. And that, so it's, so it's not really an issue for residential use. It means a residential consideration, quality of life consideration. But creating an environment which stimulates growth and economic development is a major concern right there. The North Side Shopping Center generates one billion one hundred thousand dollars yearly taxes, which creates about four hundred thousand dollars to the city general fund. And that's only half of that area that we're talking about. You councilmembers here tonight have the opportunity to help this partnership between private business and the city to grow without compromising the quality of life for any adjoining citizens. And in the interest of achieving the entire primary goal set forth through the planning department of City of Cookel, I ask the City Council to exclude this area north of Ten, west of Washington, that are currently on the way.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the audience? Other comments from the council? Yes, sir, please, please come to the left.
Hi, yeah, my name's Ernest Boyd Adams. I live on North Maple. I have a uncle, Ernest Houston Boyd Junior, here on some property on North Maple. South of North Washington, all the way. From my perspective as, as a resident of that area, I can see how it's going to, you know, to value not only residential but commercial properties. And it will impact negatively individual businesses, particularly Mr. Walker's shopping center. It will negatively impact those businesses because people are going to wind up shopping elsewhere. Do you have a restrictive policy on visiting?
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Council, I'm Joy Doffler. I represent Kelly Taze, who's here tonight. She is the public, the private conservator for Mr. Houston Boyd. She has a shared responsibility to take care of Mr. Boyd's property and assets as well as his person, and she takes that responsibility very seriously. We just wanted to point out, and I think you know, his property is the largest, right here is Mr. Boyd's property, it's fifteen acres. It's the property you've been discussing that's undeveloped. There's nothing to grandfather in, as Mr. Raiders said. It has never been developed, it is on an agricultural basis right now. And what this map does not show you is the flood plain that runs across this property and covers probably one-fourth to one-third of its property right through the middle. And so the development potential, we're unsure of what that development potential might be. And we believe that with the implementation of neighborhood commercial, with the increased setback lines and side setbacks, as well as the restriction on the size of the businesses as well as the types of businesses that could go in there, that it would have a very negative effect on what he might be able to do with that property or what his heirs or successor to that property might be able to do. It sort of punishes him for leaving it as green space all these years and looking pretty like it does at present time. One other thing I might mention, the property that runs up this way, right here. This is Maple Avenue. This is the Cumberland Church here. And they have been interested in this lot and have followed and tried to, to talk to Ms. Taze about acquiring that property to enlarge their church. As I read your commercial neighborhood code, I don't believe it would allow that to happen because of the size of the church couldn't be enlarged to include that. And I can't think of a better use for property in your zone than to allow that church to be enlarged. We would ask that you not include, we believe the entire intersection is an area that could remain local commercial and not cause a problem with what you're trying to do on Tenth Street. And in behalf of Mr. Boyd, that's what we would ask you to do. I had one question, Councilman Ryan Williams. When you mentioned the commitment that was made regarding the southwest quadrant, I wasn't sure what you were talking about.
When we rezoned as a planning commission in the council, we rezoned the property in the southwest quadrant. And that, and prob, and when we, it was my understanding as a planning commission representative, we looked at this area as an entirety when we were making the decision as to the four corners of this area. And we felt like the CN zoning was a good protection for the intersection itself because of all the residences around it. There wasn't a commitment per se on any of the adjoining properties. There was only a decision and voted upon by this council unanimously. I do believe that that CN zoning would apply for that southwest quadrant. Does that answer your question?
I guess there was no commitment then to any residential landowners or anything about rezoning the rest of it?
No, ma'am, and the council, and whether there was anything communicated, I apologize if that's the case. But it still ultimately would, would come down to five votes from this council as it relates to any kind of commitment the city would make. As it relates to the use, is this property that you're discussing, is it currently in the green belt?
Yes.
Okay. So that's why, you said earlier it was an agricultural use, which me- which means it's green-belted for agricultural purposes. Would that not also speak to the fact that that's why it's undeveloped at this point?
Well, it's undeveloped and therefore qualifies for green belt.
Okay.
And, it's fifteen acres or larger, so it qualifies.
Okay.
Yeah, it's never been developed. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just a question about what she said, that a church isn't allowed in that?
Churches are allowed in the C N. They, it depends on what the church wants to do. An unconforming use can expand as much as it wants to on existing property as long as it meets setbacks. What you're prohibited from doing is acquiring additional property.
So, if they were trying to acquire this property, then they couldn't?
They couldn't expand onto this property. What they could do, if they bought the property, is build a building up to fifteen thousand square feet on the additional, on the adjacent property. But, you can't continue to expand an unconforming use by acquiring additional property.
Well, again, all the more reason, I think, for us to, as quickly as possible, look at this. As I said before, healthcare offices and churches and those kinds of things seem to be a perfect fit into this type of area, especially when there's already something there they're wanting to expand it. So, certainly that would be another reason for us to, to look at that and, and see what we can do.
Well, churches aren't permitted use.
Well, but, I mean, they should be, I mean, the church is, is a good neighbor and they should certainly be allowed to expand. If they want to buy a piece of property and expand, they should certainly be allowed to do that. Most churches are typically confined to where they are anyway. So, I mean, their only way to grow is to acquire more property and to continue to, to build their campus, which, you know, I mean, it's a, it's certainly not a nighttime use, it's certainly not a allowed use. It's, you know, it's, I mean, those, to me, would be the kinds of things you would, you wouldn't mind being around you, so.
I'm in, I'm in agreement with Councilman Shelton about relooking at the uses as far as the C N zone is concerned. I think the planning commission has communicated that. I think as it relates to the expansion of the church, just to clarify, James, it is not correct that the church can't expand. They just can't build any more than fifteen thousand square feet on the newly acquired pieces of property. Is that correct, or no?
Yeah, if, all tracks in the C N are limited to development of no more than fifteen thousand square feet. If your current development is non-conforming right now in terms of size, you can continue to expand on that property, exceed fifteen thousand, whatever you are, up to unlimited, as long as you meet setback requirements. State law prohibits you from acquiring additional property to continue to do the expansion.
All right, I'm going to go one step further. Let's say they acquired this piece of property beside, the church did acquire the piece of property beside, and they expanded ten thousand square feet on their existing property, and it adjoined a fifteen thousand square foot addition onto the new piece of property. Could they do that?
It's a separate parcel, yes, they could.
Okay.
I thought a church was permitted in the C N.
It is. I've got a question. Do you not have to make the setback requirement? It can be a continuous building?
Yeah, you have to make setback requirements. It's ten-foot setback.
Right, so you could not, it could not be connecting. You would have to make setbacks.
If you expand out to the ten-foot side yard, then have a fifteen thousand square foot building on a separate lot. Yeah, that's, that's true, you have to make setbacks.
Right, so it would have to be a separate building.
That's why I asked the question, too.
Or, it could go to B Z A and be requested for a?
A variance.
A variance, correct?
Yes.
So, a variance could be requested and, for that, okay.
And, that property is currently non-conforming, not because of use, because of size.
That's correct. Well, it's twenty-seven thousand square feet now.
Correct.
Any further comments from the council? Any further comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Need to vote on the amendment.
On the, on, let's, let's do a roll call vote on the amendment.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
Councilman Shelton?
Yes.
Mayor Salley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
No.
Motion carries?
Okay, now brings us back to our original motion as amended. Any discussion on the, on the motion, on the amended motion?
Read it, please.
Okay. I'll try. I'll do my best.
That's fine.
Okay. We had a motion to amend by Councilman, I mean Vice Mayor Davis, second by Councilman Shelton, to remove from the area west of North Washington Avenue that borders the west of the university zone. We want it to remain the C L zone. So, does that sound right?
Well, it was bordered on the west by the university zone, then extended to Twelfth Street and the railroad tracks to the north, and bordered by Tenth Street on the south, and Washington Avenue on the east.
And, to the east.
And, it's just easy to say, everything west of North Washington Avenue?
West of North Washington, yes.
To twelve.
Well, I mean, that's, if you just say everything west of North Washington, that takes it all out, it's in this rezon.
Okay. But, does it make one multi-sided piece of property on the east side different? I mean, on the west side different? I think that's why Vice Mayor Davis decided to go all the way to the railroad tracks. Because when I look at the map, at the intersection on this side of the railroad tracks, on the, on the south side of the railroad tracks?
Because it backs up to Mainway.
But, but west?
The railroad tracks, because if you don't, you're going to have a little parking.
Well, that's what I was saying, but I thought you just said going.
Well, if you remove everything west of Washington in the ordinance, I think that covers, because that goes all the way up to the railroad track.
Okay.
Everybody good on the?
I'm good, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote on the motion as amended.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
Councilman Shelton?
Yes.
Mayor Salley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
No.
Motion carries?
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Brings us to item five. Consider on second and final reading, ordinance zero seven one one three five, rezoning properties located at East Tenth Street and Fisk Road from C L local commercial and R S ten, single-family residential to C N neighborhood commercial. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
This rezon has been approved by the planning commission. It's recommended by the planning department. No calls or comments since first reading.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Do we have a motion and our second? Any discussion by the council? Comments from the audience?
Any residents have any comments to you since that first reading?
No comments since first reading.
Okay.
Seeing no comments, I'll call for a, call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item six, consider on second and final reading, ordinance zero seven one one three one, amending the Cookville zoning code pertaining to section two zero seven, excuse me, general sign regulations. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and councilmembers, the amendments have been approved by the planning commission and recommended by the planning department. The only calls we've received have been from two of the billboard companies just inquiring about the status of the ordinance.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
A motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Brings us to the new business section of our meeting tonight. Item seven, consider appointments to the Industrial Development Board. Sponsor, Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, Thomas Lynn is resigning from the Industrial Development Board. Bob Allen, President of Pre-PAC, has been recommended to fill his unexpired term. And, we have two members that they'd like to have reappointed. That's Randy Carlisle and J.D. Parks.
All right, do we have a, do we need a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Item eight, consider approval of the two thousand and eight health insurance administrative and stop-loss contracts. Sponsor, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and councilmembers, I have two items for you to consider dealing with the two thousand and eight health plan. The first, first item is the renewal contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield to participate in their network. In addition to participating in the network, Blue Cross Blue Shield administers our health plan for us, processes claims, administers the entire plan. The renewal numbers for Blue Cross Blue Shield is a three-point-oh-three percent increase over the two thousand and seven fees that they charge. Two thousand and seven, they charged two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. The renewal contract would be two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-one dollars with them. And, that again is to participate in their network and for them to administer our plan. The second item is, as part of our health plan, we purchase reinsurance. And, basically what that means is, on every covered person in our health plan, we pay the, in the past, we paid up to the first hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in claims on those covered, or covered people. Sun Life, which is the company that we've purchased the reinsurance group from the last two years, and we've worked with them basically four out of the last six years, I believe. And, for two thousand and eight, they had proposed to keep that hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. They proposed a fifteen percent increase in that premium. We've talked with them, looked at some other numbers, and an option for us to consider, and I think we have significant reserves in place in our health insurance plan now for us to consider this, is raising that deductible up to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. By doing that, they'll decrease that premium ten percent. And, they'll drop the premium, our premium for two thousand and seven is two-hundred-and-two thousand dollars, and they'll drop that down to a hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars if we'll bump that premium up to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars per covered life. We have significant reserves in place, as I said, I think that we could, can do that. And, so, I would recommend that we renew the contracts with Blue Cross Blue Shield and, and renew a contract with Sun Life and drop that deductible down to, or raise that deductible to the a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar level.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Have a question. Are we, we are not in any way involved with the hospital's healthcare plan, are we?
No, we're not. We participate in the Blue Cross network and everything runs through them. And, the contracts that they have in place with the hospital is what our plan deals with. But, nothing directly with the hospital, no.
Has it ever been looked at to combine the two?
As far as combining the two groups itself, we?
Hasn't been for several years. We did look at it at one time, yes. It was a long, it was a long time ago.
I know, in the late nineties, we were looking at things along those lines.
Might be good to look at just to see if there'd be any savings or better, even better insurance for, for our employees.
I know our healthy employees could really help theirs a lot. Did we know why we didn't, why we, do we know why we looked at it before and didn't do it? Was the premiums changed dramatically, or we just were trying to keep the services separate?
Well, the plans themselves are kind of developed differently. I can certainly sit down with Paul Corff and try to look at trying to combine those two and see, you know, deductibles and things along those lines and the benefits that are covered are different. So, we could try to maybe mesh that together and see what we can come out with.
Well, just to see if, if either there'd be savings and if there, if there weren't really any savings, if for the same amount of money we could get better coverage for employees, that'd be the, the only reason I'd want to look at it. But, I mean, certainly one of those two options might be a possibility, so.
Jim, did the, do you recall, did the hospital a few years ago, they started working with Blue Cross Blue Shield for their plan, did they not? Or am I?
I don't know. I do know that when we went away from Blue Cross for a few years, that we're, our charges from the hospital were, we were, they were charging us a lot more than what Blue Cross would have allowed. Because I had several meetings about that. And, it, and I'm, I'm not familiar with their plan. I mean, we just have to sit down and talk to Paul and Bernie and see. I've just got a feeling they won't mesh, so, I don't, but, we'd be happy to look into it.
Okay. Any further comments of the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item nine, consider approval of purchase of one two thousand and six Chevrolet Trailblazer four-by-four, Co's Department. Sponsor, Mr. Jeff Littrell.
Mayor and City Council, we haven't our budget money to purchase a vehicle like a four-by-four, extended California Ford Ranger. Before we advertised for this vehicle, we thought we'd look around so we could find a, a good used vehicle that would, that would work as well. We found a two thousand and six Chevy Trailblazer with thirty thousand miles from Bruco Automotive for thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. This has an N A D A value of nineteen thousand dollars. This vehicle does have the remainder of the warranty, factory warranty, which is sixty thousand mile powertrain warranty. This is a budget item, and I'd like to ask your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council?
What did you have budgeted for that?
Sixteen thousand, four hundred.
So, with the difference, you might, maybe you can look at a motorcycle or something.
I see Harley, I understand.
Or bicycle, even.
Oh, yeah. Segways.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Littrell. Item ten, consider approval of purchase of four door panels for the air curtain incinerator. Public Works Department, sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, panels on the air curtain incinerator are starting to deteriorate. The ones in the worst shape are on the doors. We'd like to replace those now. They're in pretty bad shape, so, we've got a estimate of nine thousand dollars, not to exceed that, and I would recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item eleven, consider awarding the following bids. Item eleven A, excuse me, bleachers for the new gym. Leisure Services Department, sponsor, Mr. Rick Woods.
Mayor, members of council, before we get into that, the actual bid item, I would like to give you a real quick update. Contractors are very close to, well, actually have reached substantial completion of the gymnasium. Floor is down, the goals are up, floor is striped. We have developed a punch list with the architect and the, and the contractor, and they are working to finish up. We do have a couple of things the subcontractors held him up on a little bit. The, the center curtain is now projected of being, at arriving here on site, January the seventh. So, we'll be looking at scheduling and opening with you sometime late January, I hope. I just wanted to give you that update. I know some of you have been out there, and it's real exciting, and stop by and see it. As we prepare for the gymnasium, we are starting to purchase equipment. We advertise for bids, or advertise for bids for portable seating, for bleachers, tip-and-roll bleachers, three-row aluminum bleachers. We received bids, and we're recommending the low bid meeting specifications as Bliss Products, and I would recommend your approval. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? We did have the facility designs where these will fold up and be able to just push them away, right?
They are tip-and-roll bleachers, so, yes, they are, they are movable. They're on casters, so you tip them up and move them, put them back in storage, or move them out to another corridor, move them to wherever you need to move them in the gymnasium.
All right, good deal. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Woods. Item eleven B, backhoe and membrane units. Water Quality Control Department, sponsor, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we recently opened bids on a budgeted backhoe. The low bidder was Hicks Brothers, which is a local bidder, sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, and we'd recommend that bid. The bid on the membrane units, we recently opened those also. Paul Water Processing, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars was the low bidder, and we'd recommend the low bidder on both bids.
Do we have a motion?
Approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What was the budget on the membrane?
Membranes was estimated around seven fifty.
Okay.
Okay.
Was there, why the big difference between the two? Do we know? Is it just...
Paul, they, they had been bidding around that, that range in some other projects around recent bids, so we were thinking seven fifty range.
Okay.
They are trying to get a lot of the market. They are one of the big players in the market, trying to keep the market. It was good for us. Our engineering company was tickled.
This, this, this membrane unit is going to be a part of expansion, the part of the water treatment expansion, correct?
Yeah, what we're doing now, we're in, we're under contract with W and O Construction for the intake renovations. And we were going to purchase these membrane units to capture the reclaimed water to give us some additional capacity, and we're going to be in negotiation with them about a potential change order to see if we can resolve, give some prices from them.
Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Mr. Kelly. Item eleven C, generator and fault indicators. Electric Department sponsor, Mr. Tony Peet.
Mayor and council have two items for your consideration. The first one is the fault indicators. We're purchasing two hundred of those. Recommend Wesco as a low bidder meeting spec for, for those. The generator is a standby generator, stand for standby power to replace an old dilapidated generator that we currently have. Recommend M and D Electric, and they'll be supplying a Cummins two-hundred-and-thirty K W generator. That'll, that'll power our entire facility, the main facility, allow us to open doors, have lights, everything. It'll take care of that, so I'd recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. That brings us to the end of our new business. Do have one quick announcement here. We have a special birthday celebration tonight. She's, she's stayed away from home, had to come to work tonight, but Ms. Kathy McLean's celebrating her birthday this evening, and we certainly appreciate her being here tonight.
Birthday.
Twenty-nine again.
You don't want to hear the council sing.
We, we voted not to sing. We decided we would save the citizens of Cookeville.
We don't want to mess up the new mics.
We also have at this time our hearing of citizens and our delegations, and please